4:32, I'll call a meeting to order. Regular meeting in the Not Holly Planning Commission, alternate time, Tuesday, May 20th, 4:30 PM or 4:32. First item on the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? I have one, but we can put it, I guess, under number nine. I don't know what date and time we continue with. We'll just leave it as upcoming meetings, but I'd like to make a proposal on that. Anything else?
Not that I know about.
Okay. Yeah, we're done. We'll just accept the agenda as posted. We have one set of minutes that have been distributed?
Yes.
From last month.
Do you want to?
Has everyone besides me had a chance to see them? I haven't. Andy, have you looked at them? You're muted. You're still muted.
Yeah, I scanned them. I didn't read them closely. It's hard for you to say.
Have you looked at them before this?
Mm-hmm.
They look okay?
Well, they're solid.
All right, well, I have to admit I haven't read them, but I'll take it on faith that they're good.
So to speak.
If anybody else, yes, so to speak. If anybody else wants to make the motion, I shouldn't because I haven't read them. That would probably be you, Andy. Do you want to move approval?
Yes, sorry.
I'm moving a little bit of minutes drafted.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm an abstain. I haven't read them. And that's two in one abstention, so the minutes are approved. Thank you. Reports. Faith.
Okay, so the main issues I have to report are the outcomes of the two site visits that I undertook together with the chair on May the first, I believe. The first was to the seagull property on Bonn 55. There is under new business a possible subdivision permit and management for that, so I don't know if I should talk about it now or...
Let's just put it in those sections.
Okay, because the other ones-
The other ones have got a separate agenda item too, so-
Blue screws in.
Yeah.
So apart from that, I have no other items.
Okay. I don't have anything either, so let me move through that quickly. Let's move right into Gero's application. This is a revised plat. We reviewed a preliminary plat last month, made a determine there were a few things we wanted added. I don't have that list in front of me, but it must be in the minutes here. And we should just go through that quickly. I think the idea was that if it met our, all the requested changes, then we'll go forward scheduling a hearing. That was what we discussed. So let's just quickly go through, and then there'll be a chance for others to chat if you wish. Well, let's just go through that list first. Let's see here.
It's on the paragraph two.
Two? Okay, requested additions. Delineation of the woodland-wetlands area. That was down on this side. Let's see if we got that. Not really. Do you want to help us identify where that is?
I don't really know where I'm looking at it.
Okay, so we requested that the-
I know they changed the legend a little bit.
Yeah, the woodland-wetland area identified. Oh, edge of woods, edge of wetland. Well, it's kind of... Okay, so are we-
It's the, this kind of delineation.
All right.
Of the extent of the-
Well, so that's, if we're saying that it comes up like this, it's probably not what you want.
Well, that's, that's way out in back corner of the woods.
Right, well, we refer to, can we, can we go grab the, or maybe you have a small form, but the wetland survey? Is it in the back room?
It's in this one.
Is that it right there on the bottom?
No.
It was a colored one.
It's a colored one, yeah.
Well, I thought it was a bigger one, but-
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, it's the bigger one.
It's a bigger one. What, what we intended was for the, at least in part, there was a survey that showed the wetland, woodland, wetlands, and then the sort of agricultural areas.
Yeah, one of them matched with soil, soil structures.
Yeah, so let's see, this is the one. Maybe there was a little miscommunication there about what we were asking for. Right, so let's just double check here, because this is the, this yellow line, that's what we were asking for, right?
It's right here.
This, this area here, or the purple even, what's the purple? No, not the purple, it's just the study area. So is that-
See, because it's all in black and white-
The yellow line, it's right here.
See, there's a legend over there to describe what these, what these-
Yeah, so is it, do you think it's that one?
Yeah.
Down to here, and then this comes back up. Wetland continues.
Well, it's sort of like this legend here is kind of on the top of, I guess we're to assume that kind of goes through there.
Roughly speaking, yes.
But that's kind of where we need it shown. Right, I don't, I don't think you would want us to say that all this is wetland.
No.
Because that would be like a lot.
No, but you see, it comes down here, and then reappears here.
It's this, it's this part out here, which is wetland.
Right, but so like this, this text here is cutting, you don't see what I'm saying? It's cutting off the map. It looks like this continues to here, but the words... Is that your assumption too, Jim?
Well, wouldn't it show on the other map?
Well, kind of, yeah. It does. Well, okay, so Andy, are you seeing what we're seeing here?
Uh, I think so. I'm looking at the plat and the site map on my laptop. But I do have a digital map on the office.
Yeah, because what we were, correct me if I'm stating incorrectly, but we wanted essentially this boundary here, or this, this indication here, to be put on the plat, which would be... Yeah, I mean, it's just cut off by the text.
Right, you can see the-
This guy here.
The dotted line or-
Above the text and below the text.
Right.
And you can infer that runs through the text, but you can't really tell from the plat what shape it takes.
Right.
But there is the site map, the state care shows this, which I think, you know, in some ways could substitute to, or at least I'm imagining could substitute to the vagary of this particular spot on the plat.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, it's not a map the state produced. It's the engineering firm, TCB.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we had sort of said it was a state map before, but it's actually not. Mr. Gero or his attorney corrected us last time. All right, let's just keep going through. I think, you know, that's probably something I'd like to see addressed, but that doesn't necessarily, if that's the only thing that needs to change, then we could probably do that between now and the hearing. That should be easy fix. Next item was class two wetlands. I think, let's see what the legend says. I'm not seeing that, but I guess we're just calling it the dots. Yeah, I guess that's just the dots, right? Do you agree with that? It's not exactly in the legend here, the class two, the wetland areas, but I'm guessing it's the dots.
Seems, seems to be.
I think this is representing the wetlands.
Yeah.
And then the boundaries.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, if you guys are.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not in the legend, but I think it's fairly clear. Do you agree, Andy?
Yeah, I think I want to point something out, which I'm not saying it's necessarily a problem, I want to point it out. The survey that shows the wetlands, shows that they're delineated wetlands, survey area, which does not correspond with property boundaries. So there are areas that are precisely defined within the survey area, and by survey area and the wetland survey delineation. And then on the other side of the delineation area-
It just says wetland continues.
And I see that same wording incorporated in the plat here. It is just a bit of vagueness to just say continues, that's the delineating, but I just thought I'd point that out.
Yeah.
We don't have anything that actually shows where the wetland ends between the delineation area and the town.
I think these, I think it's fair to assume that it goes until the property boundary.
Well, if you look to the sort of southeast of the Inholdding, where on the site map says wetland continues, that you can see that the, it's not precise where the wetlands are. It, it, they are delineated northwest of the Inholdding, but to southeast, it just says wetland continues.
Yeah, well, I think there's probably not much we're going to be able to do about that right now.
Understood.
That's the data we have, yeah. I'm just going to keep going. The archaeological site is indicated. Yep, and the spring is indicated as on the north property. And then we have a description that says no construction proposed.
Yes, I saw it on there somewhere.
Let's see, where did that go? This is the one where there's no construction proposed, right? Do you remember where you saw it?
It's in the front block.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, you put it for all of them.
Well, there was no construction for any of it.
Okay, for any of it, it applies to all parcels. All right, I'm okay with that. You okay with that, Andy?
I didn't quite ask what is the, that you were questioning or-
Well, what we kind of requested is that, you know how there's little boxes numbering all the parcels?
Right, right.
We asked for each of those to say whether or not construction was proposed, but instead it's saying for the whole subdivision, no construction's proposed in the title block rather than the parcel block. I, I think that's fine.
I don't see a problem.
That seems adequate for me.
Yeah, fine. And reference the farm road from the, let's see, existing access drive. I think I did see that.
Yeah, they just put a, I just told them, I said it goes up along the edge of the-
That's the dash?
Yeah.
Existing farm drive, okay, yeah, that's fine with me. And the possible access is over here, did you?
They didn't put it on this map.
They didn't put it on that one?
No, it wasn't part of the state reforming it.
Right, okay, well, I'm fine with that too. And in the notes somewhere, it says that there's an act 250 permitting the subdivision now, somewhere over there. Yeah, let's see.
Was that 15?
That's got to be it, yep. 15, yeah, right. All right, I think that's everything. And I think what I would suggest is that we can schedule, you know, discussion with the commissioners and first, but I think my point of view is that we can go schedule a hearing and just expect that one change for the, I don't know how the engineer will do it, but, you know, not block out that-
Well, they probably try to keep it off of features like the right-of-way for the power line and stuff. They tried to put it in just a blank piece of land.
It was blank until we asked. No, I can understand how it happens. If they can just move the text so that we can see the line again, is that all right to you, Andy?
Even if they put the text through, but-
Even if the line went through the text, I guess, like as a-
Or maybe they either way the-
Because I'm sure we can agree. You know, we're not going to micromanage, we'll just ask them to fix that one thing. I think we can go forward. You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. So before we move on this, I'll just open it to the floor if there's any other discussion on this, assuming that you folks are here to talk about this, or, and one thing that came up in the discussion. Is this the, is that the agreement? Oh, yeah. So one question that came up, and I, I wasn't part of all the discussion, but whether there's now an agreement on the monuments-
I don't know where that came from. You know, I've stood in saying that, you know, I respect that 1.12 acre. I've never said otherwise.
Okay.
The problem exists in the simple fact that when that lot was created, when they did the survey, they didn't complete it by doing a boundary line adjustment. So the old deed does not reflect to the new one. There is no straight line, it goes from that one square acre description of that piece of property to now having four points with pins set. That's, that's, but that's not, there's nothing I can do about that. That's their deed, not money.
I have a question about that. I see that number 13 includes the following statements of Robert Harrow and Norton are entering a boundary line adjustment based on the modus operandi that this current deed exists in order to solidify existing lines that are shown on this plat. Has that, are you going to introduce it?
No.
Are you guys, are you guys willing to do that?
I have already, I have already agreed to that.
Solve all the problems.
The 1.12 acres, I've already agreed to that. The problem in the deed is that, that without that property line adjustment, there is no, I don't know what you call it, path. If a surveyor came in and asked where my surveyor discovered it, was because they couldn't find any text to affirm the boundaries of that 1.12 acre lot. It just like magically appeared.
Well, so, was it Deb or Ralph surveyed it?
Deb surveyed it, I was here with her.
Well, no.
No.
Ralph did, Ralph and Deb did it together.
Oh, they worked together on that?
Yeah. Yes, they did.
Oh, that's when she worked for him?
No, she worked, she was hired by Aunt Evelyn, his mom, and Dad hired Ralph Michaels, and they surveyed out that 1.12 plus or minus acres together. They were there together doing the whole thing.
So on both parties, so the neighbors collaborated on a survey, and that's, that means you, they agreed to it.
I helped her measure out.
And that survey is recorded?
Yes, it is.
And it's under the name Ralph Michael, but-
Yes.
All right.
And that-
Now that, well, hold on one second.
Okay.
So they set the rebar at that time?
Yeah.
All right, and they have caps on them, right?
Yeah.
Saying Ralph's surveyor number and everything.
I don't believe so, it was just reverts.
No, I said there's caps on them, I want to say.
Yeah, there's caps.
I'm not really sure I drove down the road and saw a cap on one of them, so.
Yeah.
We have that survey recorded, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and in that survey, it indicates iron pipe set, right?
Yes.
IPS.
Yeah.
All right, and that would be the one we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Now, when he had it surveyed, it's showing more, and nobody's touched the pins.
His surveyor's showing a little bit more.
Well, I, you know, my point of view, I can't get worked up about a 0.1 difference in an acre. I mean, this town has surveys that say, deeds that say plus, well, I know one very well that says it's like 75 acres and it's actually 100 or something, but, you know, I can't get too worked up about that, but we have iron pipes in the ground with caps on that are, haven't been moved since the surveyor set them, and that survey is recorded and, you know, officially recorded, right?
It's officially recorded.
Right. And when my surveyor took that information, that's the locations that they're supposed to be in. And if you take that survey that your dad had done, and you compare the numbers to that survey that I just had done, they coincide.
Okay, LS 130, that's Ralph? Probably, huh? Because you're saying licensed surveyor 130, and there's this 0.7 feet above ground, half inch pipe. And that's indicated as rebar found, oh, half inch rebar, rebar found, okay. And so this other one, rebar to be set within, I don't know, a couple of feet of it. It's a whole lot of to-do about a couple of feet.
Is that all it is, a couple of feet?
Come here and look, all of you, please. You have? I'd be really interested to see what we're talking about, because I'd rather just put this all behind us.
It's a couple of feet, that's the issue.
So there's one here, this with the half inch black and half white, that's the rebar found in the ground, all right? The one with the white is the one that this surveyor is saying that when this is recorded, they'll set. We're talking about, what, how many, a couple of feet, right?
I didn't discuss it really.
I mean, that's what it's looking like to me.
I know the methodology that they use when they measure it all, that was, he said that they're usually within a couple of inches with this new measuring technology.
Well, maybe, maybe it's 17 feet. Maybe I'm misrepresenting it, because maybe the arrow was telling me it's 17 feet between them.
What I went by, what I confirmed was I just looked at the actual footages from, from Charlie survey of the front edge of that acre lot of that 1.12 acre lot. I looked at the footage from that map to this map and confirmed it that way. Because one of the maps, it's, it's several feet, not just a couple.
Yeah, well, okay, maybe, maybe this is saying, maybe if I'm reading this now, it says 17.03 feet between the two markers, which is a little more than a couple, but in terms of the overall acreage, it's not really changing that much.
No, the acreage went from 1.12 to 1.26.
Yeah, yeah. But that's, that's the disagreement that we've been sort of talking about for over a year now, right? That's the one, that's the only one we're talking about, okay? This map says that you guys agree that your property will end at where the mark is in the ground today, that Gary's been saying, family's been saying, has been there for a while, and I'm not sure you both agree whether it's been there for a while, but that's what they've sort of been living with, it seems like, for a long time.
Yeah.
Are you prepared, as this plat suggests, to accept that as the corner? I mean, just move forward with all the stuff you got planned?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because this is saying, because if, you know, we accept this, this is saying that you guys agree there's no more fighting about the corner.
But they should do a boundary line extension or adjustment on the old, you know, to create that, that legacy, or if you guys don't-
I don't care about, if you, I would love to see that, if you guys record what they call a boundary line adjustment in the town records, you know what I'm talking about. Carolism with other people all the time.
I just reported.
You can refer to this and say that we agree, you know, because if you, you're going to probably sell, you guys who knows where the property will go, the kids or whatever, but you don't want the next generation to fight over it either.
No, not at all, no.
And you don't want a problem when you sell or whatever, so that's the best way to do it, is have officially recorded boundary line adjustment, refer to this plat that, assuming we go forward with the subdivision, we'll say that's the new boundary line, I mean, the boundary line, agreed upon one, and we can all be friends again. How does that sound?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I just want to get it so I can get it-
Yeah, I know, that's what we're trying to do, all right?
So John, who would they have to get to do that? I know I do the recording, but I don't know nothing about how to go about doing it.
Well, my suggestion is you already have Chris working for you. He can make up a boundary line agreement in two minutes. They'd have forms, and then you guys both sign it, record it, end of story. That's my understanding. Andy probably knows a little bit more about it.
Okay. I just, what I read in the, in the package that I got from the town, it were referred to the boundary line adjustments. You know, that's the only thing I've been saying all along.
All right, so do we have any more questions or concerns? Okay.
I just want to be clear, since the plat says that parties are entering into a boundary line adjustment, and I went on a proof plat which has a piece of which I know is not correct, I would love to see that agreement for the commission to call upon proof plat.
Yeah, that seems reasonable, to have that in advance of the hearing. And also be nice to have you folks at the hearing that we're going to schedule now to just confirm that agreement.
Yeah.
And then that would go into our decision one way or the other. So, okay, are we prepared to make the hearing schedule now? I'll take the yes.
Did anybody else know where they're going to put the driveway to the fields, that they're using the one by the barn? I was concerned about the water one.
Bobby had approved the one where the barway is, and I think that's-
We've asked for two different-
That's my preference, is to use that, because it's, it's much better access.
Yeah. In our last meeting, we discussed there's two possible accesses to the large lot.
Yeah.
And one of them is, is through that, I guess, old barway, next to your, immediately to the west, and the other would be what we're calling here, a farm drive that would go by the barn or the shop.
Yeah, but that goes this close to my building. I really prefer not to do that.
Right, that's a preference, but we, we don't know what the state will end up agreeing to anyway with the wetlands.
Right, it's got to go through the state.
It's in your interest to have two, because the, otherwise, if they say you can't cross this wetland, then there's no point. So I think it's a good idea to have two.
Well, the whole, the whole thing about doing the wetlands intervention stuff, it's all about the money, you know, they, they let you do it.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm telling you, it's in your interest to have two possible ways. All right, so let's schedule this thing, and then we can, Jeff's here, we need to discuss our other things, so. We're going to need a month headset, hard start on that, so often we do it before the meeting, but that's the last day of school. That's a terrible day for a meeting.
June 18.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Not a problem for you. I won't be able to do it, so what about the 7th? No, yeah, 17th, the day before, Tuesday. And I'll actually be mentioning- And I'll, I'll actually be mentioning later in the meeting that I'll propose that we move our meetings to Tuesdays, the third Tuesdays, cause the select board has it the second Tuesday, right Jeff? You guys do multiple meetings a month?
At least one, usually just one.
But if we do the third, would that interfere with your meetings?
No.
Okay, I'll propose that we do the seventeenth at, um, I don't know, let's say six o'clock. Does that work for you guys? Jim?
Yep.
I don't know about Andrew, but, am you six o'clock on the seventeenth? Is that okay with you? You're muted. Oh, I'm assuming that's a yes.
That is a yes.
Alright, all of you, the seventeenth?
Yep.
Six o'clock?
Yep, yep.
Alright, how about you Faith?
Uh, yep.
Peter, we'll have to check with, um, Rebecca, you're okay, alright, alright, let's lock it in. Alright, that's it for this issue today, thank you. Glad we got some forward progress on this.
At one point, you guys are gonna be looking for some money, I'm assuming, a check. Cause nobody's done that yet.
Nope, you haven't paid yet, alright, well.
I had no, they said it was supposed to be part of, like, this process now, even determine.
Oh, it's supposed to be the application, so.
Or whatever.
Yeah, alright, you guys work it out.
She'll notify you, Bob.
Just, just so you know, I'm on the road tomorrow, I'm headed down for my granddaughter's graduation, so I'm gonna be back for a week or so.
Alright, so you're clear on what we're gonna need in the revised plat? The text is now cutting off the wetland designation.
Okay, so you want me to get them to do me another one?
With the wetlands.
Well, cause we're gonna need a Mylar anyway.
Can I order the Mylar at the same time?
Yeah, you should.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, you know, assuming they know how to do that fix, that should be pretty easy, so.
It should be an easy fix.
And there's a whole month to do.
With these people, it's been, it's been like really difficult as of late, I don't, I'm not sure what is going on, but I had to tell them like every day.
Faith?
To get this.
Yeah, alright, well, thank you. Alright, so.
Bye, guys.
Still, we need them all next time. You almost made it.
They all get full anyway.
Well, a lot of times you get them in the right position like Goldman, they'll grow off. Didn't happen that time.
Alright, I don't know how, the best way to do this, so we're gonna have a couple of different options with this. So this is the giant.
Think you named this one?
Yeah, the giant one from the state. And, um. We're supposed to roll these maps the other way so this doesn't happen.
Yeah, well, we're off the road.
If they're all the other way, then they jeopardize getting the outside there.
Yeah.
Cause it's on the outside, so. Oh, did I lose this?
Yes. I was gonna use it as a weight.
So, I made a version, and I don't know how helpful this is, but, um, that Peter's sharing on Zoom. That's, unfortunately, I did not match the colors to what the, the regional did.
Get fired.
Yeah, exactly, refund my paycheck. The reason I did it is because it's on the same scale as ours. So hopefully, we can sort of blink between them, um, when we can't figure out what the differences is, uh, differences are. I don't know exactly what they're looking for in terms of feedback, it was pretty unclear, like, I kind of think they're looking for not much feedback.
Okay, great.
They just want to say it looks good.
I don't know if there's anything like glaringly not, I guess it's like, look at the pink or.
Yeah, so that's the obvious difference, the, the main difference.
Than we want in the other ones, I feel like that's really the big.
Is, is our, is our village, so like, we had to find a new village area. Up on Hortonville. I still think that would, who knows, a Palendo or something like that, but, um, I think that's a great place for, you know, a denser develop. So just up the road from us here. Um, you know, we have countryside, um, you know, I, it used to be. Correct, maybe probably before your time, but like, there used to be all kinds of stuff up there, churches and.
Yeah, we burned it all.
Yeah.
Church was recent too, right, and we lost fifteen years ago.
The Catholic church.
Well, it used to be a tavern, I think. Used to be a tavern, a tell, I mean, cause this was the Koch Road.
Yeah.
Stage Road. And, um, it still seems to fit with a, you know, a pretty nice, like, it has like a square, I mean, there's a barn in there and stuff, but.
Yeah, the big house up on the corner there was an inn.
Yeah, so. I don't know what the rules are for doing that, um, they've called our municipal center a village, we call it differently, we call it, yeah, we call it municipal, but.
Can you move back that much? Perfect.
And try to, there's lasers.
Somebody else tends to do that, Jeff, so don't feel bad.
Well, I, I'm broadcasting everything you're pointing at.
Yeah.
On that map.
So.
Yeah, smile.
I mean, my, you know, my thought is that that's fine if we wanna call this a, a village. I don't know if we really want a village going up this steep part of Hortonville, but. That's, I don't know, this intersection is.
I mean, their designations are allowing, it changes what, something to do with Act two fifty?
Yeah. Exemptions for Act two fifty.
Are just the way they look at it.
Well, until like up in the Belmont area, he said something about, um, changes to increase the size of that area. Which I don't know what he.
Oh, well, they said, basically, they said they couldn't, they couldn't expand it as much as we did, as basically what he's saying, we can see they have rules. I hope they at least follow the parcel boundaries a little better, cause like, the village designation now is just wacky, but. It is nice sooner that they went all over to Dodge though. Cause I think, you know, that is an area where you could imagine some more houses in there, the one you're there.
It's a little swampy in there.
Everybody.
But hey, we, we can build a house anywhere.
We can build a house anywhere. Act two fifty wouldn't really apply to a, a single family build anyways. It'd be more like a multi-family build, like where it would even matter. Act two fifty wouldn't apply, like, if somebody went and built, they never, it's way under develop, any requirements for doing anything with act two.
Any substantial subdivision.
Yeah, what's a substantial, three?
Yeah, probably, I forget what the act two fifty triggers are, but, I mean, this is a sizable lot, if they were gonna develop it, this is, um. I mean, I probably shouldn't say names, but, um, yeah, anyway. If it were to be, you know, commercial or, you know, multi-family housing, then it would be act two fifty.
So it'd be better from a easing of the regs to try to make it as big as possible, I guess, right? Areas.
That's the idea of this whole legislation change, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. Less restrictive.
Mm-hmm. I mean, the, the downside, something that sort of.
Question would be that I was, or comment would be is how big can we make it a little bit, here or there, bigger?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not clear on what their rules, he referenced like their standards a few times, but it's not really clear on what that is. I think they probably just had, came up to some like algorithm to turn a map into these rules that, cause they didn't wanna go have hand drawing anything. Cause that, you know, for the whole county, it would be tremendous difficulty.
But, but at least for these two, they, it looks like they must have used actual property boundaries.
Hey.
Well, this one you might question a little bit, cause it's kind of a arch.
Oh, I think they kept this, this side probably, they looked like they might have corrected this top and west side a little bit.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't normally find a property line like that.
Well, this one's definitely not a property line, the one that's adjacent to the road on the south, that's, it's not, I know it's not, cause it's a larger parcel. But one thing that's sort of baked into this whole nap, this whole idea, is it just assumes the town is zoning. Cause what it's saying is like, act two fifty doesn't apply and therefore you can just handle it locally. But in our town, there is no handling it locally, right, so it's a little bit odd, right, so we're like encouraging of, of. In some towns, you're encouraging planned development, but in our town, you're encouraging unplanned development. So, it, you know, just so you guys know that this is gonna sort of put a little bit of pressure on the town to reconsider it at some point in the future. It's really becoming kind of almost impossible to ignore. Cause this, we really rely on the state even for one acre parcels to like look at some of the things, cause, cause nobody else is. I don't really remember exactly the answer he gave, I'm not sure I understood it, on why, um. The, in this case, um, light blue takes precedence over anything else. That seems pretty odd to me.
Light blue, you're saying?
Well, when I asked Devin, I asked him why the light blue, which is agriculture and forestry, takes precedence, so. You can see, it is the kind of on top of everything else. You know, you don't see any, um, home cutouts in the blue, you don't see any, um, riparian protections in the blue, so like, from both directions. Like, whenever something is in current use, it just gets ag, period. Whereas if something is in conservation, you know, you have carve-outs and all kinds of other stuff. And, um.
The map I'm looking at shows light blue as an order of conservation.
Am I, is that not correct?
Oh, so I did not match the colors with the state's map, sorry. In my map that you're looking at on the screen.
Okay.
That's a yellowish.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in a hurry. So let's, maybe we'll just go in order, so the village thing, do we wanna make a suggestion that they add a village that maps closer to our mixed use area?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We probably should.
Yeah. We had, we made it quite extensive, they probably won't allow that, but at least like in the areas surrounding the intersection. Okay. Um, the next one that was sort of obvious from the discussion with Devin was this, um, recreation area.
Are we happy with the village delineation? Is it active or not?
Well, yeah, let's go back to that, that's a good point, so maybe we should expand it into this area, maybe draw straight across more like we have here. Cause I, I mean, you wouldn't want to have just houses along the road, that's like the opposite of dense development, where you have like strip development around roads, you wanna have like. You know, a few homes, something like that. I think that, I mean, I don't think that's necessarily the landlord would ever want that, but.
They want them all, everywhere they can sell them.
So what do we think about that, just adding a little more space on the?
Yeah, so a little more space, yeah, that matches.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
So on this one?
Followed up with Faith?
Yeah, on this one. Is it, try to go up further up the, up there?
Or make that different one.
Different, which way?
Well, I mean, we could just extend it all the way up, but have a run of one and two.
Yeah, separate, I got you.
I mean, there's, it's a detail, I mean.
Yeah.
It depends on how.
Cause really, it's like, most dense, it's probably right there, where the old inn was, that. It's not too far.
I mean, I know.
It's like for that matter, it's.
Did you talk to Blaze at all?
I know.
I'm sure he would love to have more houses up there.
For that matter, at the bottom. What do I get, I'm so, this.
What are you looking for?
Like down Tarboville, I'm just like turned, I'm looking at this map.
Run over here.
It's like, that's pretty dense right there, I would say, that's probably the most densest part of the town.
You, you've got a whole development right there in itself.
Well, it's historical, ain't what.
Right. But I would say the homes are almost closer there than they are.
Oh, well, that, there's not much here now, the thing is, it's sort of aspirational. And that's sort of one thing he indicated in his discussion, was like, it's not so much a future land use map, but the way he's drawn it, it's like a current land use map. But ours is like a future one, we're like saying that's where we wanted to go. But my, I don't know if like this is particularly great, like traffic wise.
Or from that standpoint, even more.
There's the river.
Yeah, there's, it's pinned in the valley almost.
Yeah, and the same thing goes with Bollesville. Like Bollesville's a nightmare for traffic too, cause like, there's that, you know, come down that hill and you sweep to the right and you've got the bridge coming. And the same thing down here. Like, that's one of our most high traffic and high accident areas.
Yeah, that's, that's down by, uh, hearings, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's common spot to have bend of Fender.
One, two, three, four, like five roads kind of all coming.
And businesses, cause you got, you got rice and then you're gonna have master pine.
Yeah.
And then you got cabinet place, and then I think it looked like somebody else was maybe.
A lot of them happened with.
Yeah, you got, you got Jason's body shop.
Across the road from him, looked like somebody else was.
There's a painter.
Yeah, or painter, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is. The painter's a new person.
This is starting to get.
Yeah, and then there's like a shop happening up here now.
Oh, you got Jim Chester's workshop up there.
So I don't, yeah.
And possibly Harry's restaurant.
But that's all labeled as rural general.
That's what, that's what they do, yeah.
Which is probably.
We did mixed use.
Maybe that would be another comment is, we have quite a few businesses in this zone.
Yeah, but it's a terrible place, I mean, if they, that's our flood hazard, like, the new maps that come out from FEMA. Are gonna include that whole area in the flood zone, because it has flooded, but anyway.
Yeah, but there's also like lots of this, there's lots.
Flood.
There's lots over here upwards of the bridge that currently store. There's some openings in here with like trailers and so forth in here, so it's like, it's only gonna be a natural place for more. Yeah, like you said, it's like a slippery slope, am I leaning too far forward of zoning?
Yeah, I, I think I would prefer to just stick with what we've got and then add the one at the old Mount Holly.
Yeah.
You know, I, you can't, I mean, you can sort of dream a little bit about this area, if the homeowners up there, the landowners wanna do something, I think. You know, people always ask like, where is Mount Holly? Well, it could be right there, it could be pretty.
We've got one across the road that's gonna be going in, um, but I don't know when, the driveway is put in, but.
Oh, is that the one that goes up?
Yeah.
Goes up to this, oh, that's a driveway?
That's, well, the driveway is actually gonna come off the road, sweep to the left and up around. That slope there is to get the home in.
Oh, yeah.
As I understand it, talking with a dirt person.
Yeah, yeah.
Right there? It's right on the cross of the, cross the road and head up the hill, that, yeah, on the left side right there, yeah, that one.
Alright, so I think we're good on villages then.
Okay.
We'll add one more, ask, you know, cause they may just say no, we'll see.
Yeah, they may say.
So we'll have to write this all up and send it to you guys and you guys will have to.
Pass along.
Yeah. I don't know how that works with like your next meeting, oh, you got an extension?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Alright, resource based recreation, now this one, I don't have any idea what the rules mean, but it's very odd. Because we have one, this whole thing.
Mm-huh.
Which, to me, is crazy because there's no similarity between Mount Holly Heights and the top of Oklahoma.
And.
And there, and there's one little spot right there, you know.
I, I wonder if that was a. I'm wondering if that was a.
I'm wondering if that was a mistake.
So I would prefer if it has to do with development or like not no review kind of stuff. These are exactly the areas we, we do want review. Like, we don't want industrial stuff necessarily happening on the top of, this is, this is public land, it's leased.
Yeah.
It's not privately held. And then there's all the land around Nineveh. That.
It's private land.
It's private land, but it's sensitive. I don't know, I don't understand that one.
Yeah, but you, you were there and started dropping the ball.
I don't understand the designation they give it to land south in Nineveh because all that land is in, several hundred acres is in. Forest legacy is permanently conserved, but it's not marked as rural conservation.
Well, it's marked as, as forestry because it's in current use. So that's the thing I was mentioning earlier, is when it's in current use, it supersedes any, any other consideration, for whatever reason, they like.
And what you're asking in forest legacy?
Yeah, I know, but I was, I was asking him the other day on whether um. Conservation was more, you know, protective than, than ag or forestry. And he said, no, it's not, but I, I don't understand that. So I don't know what the word conservation means, if it doesn't mean that. All right, so I don't know what to make of that, maybe I gotta do the training.
Got to do more than that.
Like what did, what's the, you know, what is the similarity between Mount Holly Heights and the top of Okemo? Like I, we want completely different things from those two places, right?
But, but as I say, this is where I wonder if there was some error somehow.
Some misunderstanding?
Yeah. Because it's not only Mount Holly Heights, it's also.
Down there are patches property.
Well, so those, no, those are all, they are primarily seasonal places, like not entirely, but there's, you know, rentals in both places. And the same with, they're seasonal in, in.
Well, now, but, but that's. The lighter one down here.
Recreation.
Nineveh certainly is.
So the definition is like.
These are skiers.
Large scale, resource based recreational facilities, often concentrated on ski resorts, lake shores, or concentrated trail networks, which provide infrastructure, jobs and housing to support recreational activities.
Okay.
Okay, so they mean housing.
Housing for workers.
Well, it could be, and facilities, it could be right, natural recreational facility.
Short term rental, stuff like that.
We don't have more facilities up here.
No.
But it is, it's a ski. It's a, it is, it's a ski resort.
Right, there's no housing there though.
But it's a recreational, recreational area.
Yeah, and what does it, what does it do, what does the designation do? They have exemptions for what, what is allowed and stuff. Man, it's just wild to me that like when it's on state lands that there's relaxed. Review. All right, well, maybe.
Isn't that state leased land?
Yeah, yeah. You would think that state land, publicly held land would have the higher review, higher standard of view. I'm pretty sure that they wouldn't allow building housing on there too. There's a very specific lease. Like they can, they got, they got an Act 250, by the way, it's sometimes interesting, because I don't think we got the proper notice on that last Act 250, because they thought it was in blood law. But they, they put in a new ski lift tower up here and actually over here. Actually here, two years ago.
But similarly around Nineveh. And more, is, is this supposed to be?
Hiking, camping.
Hiking, camping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that's a real stretch, I would say.
It's.
The new mapping.
Isn't that the wilderness? Where they've got the camp, the summer camps and their.
Mm-hmm, yeah, some of them, but I think actually that's.
A lot of that.
It's just that section to the east that.
Act 120, Act 181 identifies future land use areas, FLUAs, in terminology that regional planning commissions, working in coordination with their towns, must incorporate into their future land use maps, flu maps. The new regional flu maps will be used to determine eligibility for municipalities tier one A, tier one B status, enabling Act 250 exemptions and in turn facilitating increased housing opportunities.
But since we don't have zoning.
I don't know what tier we are either.
I, I think because we don't have zoning, we're not in tier one A or one B, isn't that what he said?
Something to that effect, yeah. Because tier one B is 50 units or fewer housing exempt, tier one A is full Act 250 exempt, which I don't think, that's more like cities probably. That's what he was saying, and then tier two is Act 250 status quo. And then tier three expanded jurisdiction to be established by board rules February 2026. Not based on regional maps.
I'll be dumb, do you know what those definitions mean?
These?
No, what you just read.
Well, what I was trying to figure out.
Because the comment he made is like, well, you're gonna be here until they come up with the rules and you're gonna be under this one.
Yeah, so I was trying to figure out which one will be under.
It's like, uh, what, which rules, what do you actually say, what are you actually telling me?
Or not tier one A, I know that, that was the conversation.
And I apologize, but I have another meeting.
Oh, there it is.
We're being late.
What year was Act 181?
It was like last year.
It was like 2023?
Twenty-four.
Try twenty-four. The new jurisdictions are referred to as tiers and where possible align with existing regional courthouse.
Yeah, the state never makes anything easy to figure out.
This design, the designation acknowledges the economic and social importance of these areas and aims to balance development with conservation efforts.
It's probably on that handout, on that website.
Yeah, I had a quick look at that.
I didn't get anything from the handout. I looked at it a couple times. I just fail to see how Nineveh really matches.
I was totally confused, frankly.
Join the birdie.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would say that we should probably ask for that to be removed, it's all, there's no way that that, we, we want to encourage additional development around Nineveh, I don't believe. And there's no real public access other than the boat ramp anyway. Um, and there's no likelihood of it creating jobs or substantial amounts of new housing, right? I mean, it just doesn't seem to fit any.
Well, you, you'd get the new housing from construction of camps and so on from the out of state people and.
Well, yeah, but the.
But other than that.
If it's within the Nineveh founding group, I don't know the right word, they limit the amount of acreage size of what you can build. I mean, June was telling me about.
It just, it just means you can build more on a smaller space.
Uh, it's limited to like how high you can go and how wide you can go. I mean, you would know that, you know the rules.
He's trying to tell us. What?
And if you say that again.
Those lots are about uh, almost sixty lots up there and they're all limited to one six hundred and eleven.
Yeah, the only part of the Nineveh area that I can conceive of being even remotely applicable here is the, is the actual Farm and Wilderness Camp, because that's a recreation opportunity. That's like, you know, it's a private one, just like Okemo is, you have to pay to access it, but it is something that creates jobs. It does have, you know, other benefits. But that's, you know, I don't know how you even define the camp other than, you know, the holdings of Farm and Wilderness itself, but.
I. Well, part of it is that, as you pointed out, John, even though this map is supposedly future land use, uh, it's been described as largely reflecting current usage of the land. But a lot of the designation doesn't seem to fit either.
Right. My suggestion would be that we give feedback that the area that's indicated here does not really apply around Nineveh, with leaving open the possibility that they want to include part of the summer camps or the, you know, the kids' camps as rep, resource based recreation.
Mm-hmm, that'd be about the only thing out there in that respect.
Does that sound reasonable? Everybody?
I think so.
Okay. Steven?
I.
How else you describe?
Yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Um, and, and I think the, the heights probably is a borderline one. Um, I think there are, I mean, it's very unlikely that there are workers living there. But I, I, I know that skeeters live there, stay there.
Yeah, you've got, you've got short term rentals in there.
Yeah, I mean, that probably does apply in some way.
You know, and regular, regular homeowners in there too.
Right, uh, it doesn't, the librarian, what's his face, the librarian and his family, I think, live.
Yeah.
Right, it's right there.
Yeah, somewhere. No, he lives over.
Somewhere off somewhere.
No, I thought he lived on the house.
No, because he, because that came up at the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
There, I, there are people, there are full time people, I don't know.
Yeah, there's both in that, in Mount Holly Heights, you've got both their renters and you've got.
It's tricky though, because you, you start to think about where the short term housing is, it's all over the town.
Yeah.
I mean, my road, all along 155, I mean, you, you know, there's all places.
Somebody asked me the other day if the town had a list of the rental properties and the B and B properties, I just laughed at them.
Well, you'd need an ordinance for that.
So there's an interim Act 250 exemption within a quarter mile of the village until July 1, 2027. So from what I gather, we're a tier three town, which is this is, tier three isn't really defined yet. But 2026, that's what I gather. And then I found this GIS state website with like a interactive map, and then when you click on the village.
What's tier two? Tier two.
Where do you, did you find tier two somewhere?
Well, tier three is, is the resource conservation areas, like um critical natural resources, that's gonna be like, I don't know if it's per town or not what green the area is, but that's like national forest. My guess is they're probably gonna end up using part of this green to figure it out.
Which, the rural conservation? Which green?
Hmm?
Sorry, which?
Dark green.
Which is rural agriculture?
Conservation.
Rural conservation, yeah.
I mean, this is a, this is one that should, there's a couple in here that are just crazy. PK Brown should be in conservation, not forestry, but the fact is that it's both. It's, it's got an easement to protect, it's conserved, but it's still logged. But so is the state forest, so is the national forest. Like just because you do forestry on it, doesn't mean that it's, it can't be conserved land, right? So do you guys know, you know, this property? So I, I think this is one that definitely needs to change. So it's sort of, this is the Old House of Bread owned by the Amals, I believe now. And this one here, it's sort of like a step, it comes up to here. It's sort of like a stealth fighter looking thing. That is the PK Brown property, it's quite 460 acres and was conserved, I don't know, 20 years ago or something. All of this is, the big property up here is um Forest Echo. And that also has a conservation easement through Vermont Land Trust, I believe. Um, that should be conserved too. So I think that's sort of what Andy was getting at before. And the same applies to a lot of the Farm and Wilderness properties or formerly Nineveh Foundation properties that have a forest legacy easement. If there's a conservation easement on it, it should not just be in forestry, it should be in conservation. I think that's sort of pretty, pretty clear logic, right? Do you agree with that, Andy?
I do, and that's a, of course, a lot of my confusion.
Right.
I mean, our map has a lower proposal for conservation. And their map or the region's map has them treated separately, which doesn't always make sense.
Right, they're, they're not even close to mutually exclusive, right? They are, you want to do forestry on forested properties, whether they're conserved or not, that's just what you do.
Well, if you want them to grow properly.
Right.
Yeah, you bring, I mean, what is it, uh, the Forty Days property is. Uh, they brought the.
Forester.
Forester in, tell them which trees they could take down.
Yeah.
I mean, and they do it every, I forget how many years, there's a cycle.
This property here, um, yeah, right here is also conserved, that the, I believe it's owned by the Metas or Mattas now. So it was a large conservation, and there's an easement on that too. I think. I think the Yale Forest, even though it's not strictly speaking, conserved.
But no way it is.
It's conservation land, they're never gonna develop it.
Right.
So I would, and this one is, is probably a little bit trickier. Um, this is the, sorry, Andy, were you saying something?
No, I'm sorry.
I don't know if this is one they'll go for calling um, conservation, but this is the old um, Wildlife Wonderland. The zoo.
Oh, the old, the old farm?
Yeah, animal farm, giraffes and stuff.
But my understanding is, one of the things about this and the designations that they have given is that these are statewide. They're, they're kind of determined beyond the Regional Planning Commission.
I don't think so. Regional Planning Commission, the reason they're putting this, they put this together.
I know, but based on Act one eighty-one, what Bevren was saying during the Select Board meeting was, every uh, Regional Planning Commission is supposed to apply the same approach.
Yeah, I'm not sure I believe that.
Well, the idea was to try and get a bit more um, conformity across these regional plans.
Well, what we're gonna say is that properties with conservation easements should not be merely in forestry. They should be in conservation. I mean, it's sort of like, I don't know, almost by definition.
So you know, like this one here was forest management. Used to be, I don't know if it still is or not.
Well, yeah, I mean, all the blue ones are.
Well, some of them aren't. Some of them have come out.
Which one? That's what we're supposed to tell them.
This, this one they've corrected. The one above me was in forest management. This one was, I don't know if it's still, like I said, I don't know.
So they did take this now, the one on your road. Cause now it's, it's in, I mean, that's the funny thing about it, is you take it out of current use and it goes into conservation.
Yep. So that, yeah, this section here, I can go in right now and just start cutting the whatever I want.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, the, the insistence that anything in current use simply be in agriculture and forestry is bizarre.
I mean.
Well, cause it's managed, I mean.
So it's.
It's managed for the, I mean, mostly the, those or areas of forest in current use are managed for the conservation of the forest.
This is, this is managed forest. This is managed forest.
Yeah.
It's logged, it's man, it's actively managed.
Yeah, in fact, the north face of Okemo is being logged now.
But it's not, cause it's managed for for, and I get, I kinda get why they're doing it. It's not like, there's nothing preventing you from pulling it back out, other than just money. So it's really not, it's not like, it's not a deeded conserved land.
What?
You could take, you could take it out of current use.
Yeah, if you've got enough money.
Yeah, but you could.
It's very expensive to pull it out. But you could. Well, yeah, you can, no, but you can.
But my point is.
But it's very expensive.
There's no way.
But it's not conserved. It's just simply in there as a tax break. I mean.
But this will never, that's why, to me, conservation is a more restrictive than this, because yes, you can still take that out, pay the penalties, develop it, people have done it. This will never, ever, ever be developed. This will never, ever, ever, ever be developed. It has an imperperity conservation easement on it.
Give it another fifty years.
Well.
But are you saying that you need an additional category as we have in the town?
No, I think they should, they should be, it should be in conserved land. Unless this just absolutely has no meaning whatsoever. If you assign it the meaning it has by.
Has no meaning at the moment, but at some point it will probably. Yeah, that's one of the big things right now. A lot of this has no meaning.
I would like to say to them, to the Select Board, to the Select Board, say to the Regional, land with protective conservation easements or restrictions on development should be in conservation, rural conservation, regardless of whether or not it has a UVA um, active. It seems pretty obvious to me, I don't know.
Say it again? So you're trying, only keep my house, for example?
You don't have a conservation.
No, I just, I'm current use.
Yeah, that's fine. They should say blue. This, 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 and this, among others, have easements on them that prohibit development forever. There will never be a house on it, ever. That's not the same as your property with current use. There's a fundamental difference. This is a sort of, the idea of this is like where we can look for opportunities for development or like what the future land use is. The green stuff, we don't build on. That's the idea. Not gonna build, not gonna build, not gonna build, not gonna build. Like, calling it the same as, I don't know, that, doesn't make any sense to me. Now, someday, some of these might turn from blue to green. Someday that might, someday that might, someday that might, someday that might, who knows? But what's also likely is that some of these will turn from blue to, damn, whatever beige, damn, whatever that is.
What's beige?
No, no, just general.
Yeah, cause, yeah, I guess I do. So wait, what's the difference between some of these that are privately owned? What you're saying, conserved?
They're conserved. This, this, and this have federal easements on them. The federal government prohibits development. So, yes, it's privately owned, but the restrictions are held.
Isn't this, this over here too? Even this is somewhat restricted.
Well, so that's an interesting example, right? Because th- that is a good example, because this land here
is open field farm.
Is agriculture.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's conserved.
It's conserved though.
But that's my, that's my whole point. It's got a conservation easement on it, just like this one, just like this one.
But it's marked as conserved.
Exactly.
But the same thing, I don't think you can do anything on, anything around there, like, other than the house.
That's also considered.
Right.
It's like, so in.
And this, and this, and this is the same thing, that's, whatever that and that should be the same, cause I think it's all part of the same, it was all part of the same.
Whatever formula they're using, you just.
Basically, it's a map, that one isn't, so.
There's, there is a, there is a GIS map that the state made, that's a protected land database. They just didn't use it.
All right, now this is the thing down.
Put that in your notes, the protected lands database.
The piss, the stone pit quarry.
Same bit.
Actually.
Usually.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have that as mixed use though, in this one.
Then you've got these little brown spots here, what's that, a case of the measles?
Housing. Uh, so they just put a buffer around every house. So they do, they do this all like with program. So they go and say, all right, everything current use turned blue. But, okay, that's, I don't understand why that was not blue.
Cause it was like an F then statement and something was weighted, like.
Yeah, but I don't know what their.
Yeah, I don't either.
Also, it's obnoxious that they have the wrong town line on here, but.
Yeah, what else is new?
That's the wonky thing that Weston uses. So far off and amazing.
It's only like four hundred feet.
It's not. All right, so what else? Um, another interesting thing is in some cases, they've added wetlands as rural conservation. So they went through and they, another sort of.
Oh, cause their definition does say class one, class two wetlands that are, class one and class two wetlands that are five acres or larger.
Right, well, that makes sense. But does it say unless they're in a current use parcel?
Nope.
See, that's where I don't think they applied the rule correctly. Cause it's just wacky, right? Like, look, here's a wetland, and then when it hits a current use parcel, it's like, stops. And then they kind of bled it through on the road by accident.
Yeah.
But like, here, that and that, it's like.
There is a comment on.
I think that the.
Is it just a mapping thing?
Class two rules should overlay the current use map.
It's almost, it's almost meaningless anyways, because wetlands are regulated differently anyway, so.
Well, but yeah, but it's just at least more accurate.
Yeah.
You know, giving you an indication. I don't know if it's just, they're trying to, you know, my, my guess is that they wanna like come up with some statistics and they wanna say, oh, there's this much acreage that's in ag and forestry. Yeah, they wanna like brag about something, but they're fudging the numbers.
We probably go back to the original bill and probably there's some required math that has to happen. Percentages or something. We should just put it as a comment though, just ask.
This is hilarious here. These like errors, like how the heck did that happen?
Is there a house there?
Could be.
No.
Hmm?
Hundred percent no.
Is that, what is it?
Property of what, a couple of years ago for the Conservation Trust. There's no house on it, could guarantee it.
Oh, no, isn't that the house?
That's a random house, that's, yeah.
That's the location of the fallen down house that was on the property fifty years ago, no?
What, the other?
And then this one right here is a carve-out for the cell tower that's actually in a neighboring town. But that doesn't mean that you want like a house, like, it doesn't make any sense. So we can just like.
Only it's supposed to make sense.
And we're gonna help you with it. Like what, yeah, I don't know what that, what is that garbage? Like, you see just like spray?
Well, right here.
On Greendale Road?
Yeah, there's nothing on.
Uh, well, there are several houses up at the top there.
No.
But they're not circles.
Well, they're on Greendale, they're not on Scampsville. This is off in Scampsville.
Yeah, that's that little forest, I mean, it's, it's not even a road, it's.
There, there's a couple of fields down there.
Yeah, but anyway, we could ask them to clean those things.
Well, there, there's a couple of fields back there and that might be what those are designation of.
All right, so you, you got those guys. This one is, is, is kinda funny too. I think what they did with these is they looked at like forest cover, cause there is a home that is just on a west side, and they probably did one of these like circle region things, buffers. But then they also probably looked at where like, there's a forest cover map, like where there's trees and where there's fields. Or, I'm not too worked up about that one, but, but that one and that one are just not.
Like, what caused that? That's weird.
Wetlands.
Wetlands in the middle of it, so it would have been all yellow.
And where's that one located?
Yeah, so they overlaid wetlands on top of the yellow, but they did not do it to the other.
Didn't do the other one, so, so just put it as a comment.
Yeah, I think we should ask them to overlay wetlands on the blue, it just makes more sense. At least the pink.
At least put it in writing, so it's like, oh, I didn't, they can respond.
But should, shouldn't, I mean, is it just a basic mapping error?
Yeah.
In terms of the, the, no, the way in which it's just been printed out on the.
It depends on whether it's a mapping error or it's, or they're following some rule in the statute that they have to do.
Now, this color is a what again?
Conservation.
Green.
I'm just wondering if they're sure. Cause from the way I understood it, the way this property is all like a pie. So like this house, you know, I'm making it up here, but this house, its property line goes, you know, like.
Yeah, they're very urgent parcels.
Whether each of the, unless it came with the property when they subdivided it.
Is that an elevation?
I find it hard to believe that everybody would conserve all their property.
Oh, it's not.
It's not, it's not current use.
Oh.
It's not that kind of conserve.
Current.
Kind of.
Weird, that's color.
So I don't know what, I don't know what rule they, they used to generate all of it.
I mean, this is the same color as this, but this is.
Right.
I mean, yes, they're, cause it's so steep, but, you know, you.
It's not like that's over, if it was over elevation twenty-five hundred, but I don't think that's, that's not over twenty-five hundred.
But.
No, I don't know how they came up with the rule for what's green. Except that I do know that it includes wetlands. But my guess is that they kind of had like a sort of proclamation area where they said like everything, you know, like this road was the cutoff. Something to that effect. And that probably came from one of the Fish and Wildlife or this.
What swamp is there?
I'm just, I'm confused, cause I'm trying to figure out where, I mean, you've got the beaver thing, but I would have thought that's further down.
Which beaver thing?
This is Crowley, this is Crowley, that's what you're talking about there. And my guess, it's probably
Probably Crowley.
Wetlands and something to do with forest, we'll have to look at the rules that he's, my guess is forest cover. And they did not include forest cover in the interior of the town. So my guess is like, they started with yellow. On top of that, they put where they think the sort of major blocks of habitat are. They cut out of that around every home and every, every part around a home that had like a cleared field, like a yard. And then at the very top, they slapped down curdews. I think that's basically how they came up with it.
But, yeah, some of these are around here, this is all forested, well, lots of very large areas of forest cover.
Oh, there are farms over there.
This area here, for example.
Uh, they were also, I think so.
It's very swampy in there.
Cause that goes up the Shrewsbury, um.
There's a couple of, there's a couple of farms over in that area.
Yeah, there's, uh, it's been a while since I've been there, but it's was a bunch of farm, you know, a lot of farms around that area.
Yeah.
I mean, there'll be forests too, but it's.
It's also a catch-all. According to this, it's all remaining landers, otherwise mapped, the yellow.
Yes, that's, that's what I mean. I'm pretty sure they started with the whole state, the whole town purposes as yellow. Then they had some areas where they said, everything south of one fifty-five, everything in this area.
They probably did the current use.
And then they slapped the current use on the very top.
Now they, yeah, ignored property lines.
Yeah.
And then the blocks on the very top is actually the villages and the nades, but this one also has a conservation easement. So I, I would say, we suggest that they use the protected lands database to augment the conservation designation. Which includes um, private and public easements of conservation, easements and restrictions. Um, I mean, there's no point talking about the, the tan, because it's just like the default. Which would be like our residential. And then the, the.
But for example, they got, remember the, this right here is the uh, the, the, the burned down. The, the, the burned down hotel.
Blue Spruce?
Blue Spruce.
Yeah.
It's like general use, but it's, it's partially in a flood zone.
Well, they haven't done flood areas.
That's not.
Flood, flood areas aren't listed.
They're now listed.
Okay.
We do.
I'll shut up then. I will shut up.
Yeah, they included class one and two wetlands, but not just, you know, floodable areas.
It should be part of rural conservation.
Which one?
Flood hours.
If municipality does not have flood hazard, only if we don't have that element. Yeah, cause at that point I would just control, that would control.
Right, and that's sort of what I'm saying is baked into this. They're, they're sort of assuming that the town has local regulations. And they're saying, well, the state doesn't have to get involved. I mean, Devin said it in the, in the select board meeting. He's like, you know, you guys could have local control. He's like, well. Actually, no, you can't, cause you're out of the town that doesn't have any regulations. We only do when it's a flood area. That's essentially, essentially like zoning. They call it zoning.
Or, or if it was like a wetland, cause then at that point it would be state or own record regulating.
I assume though.
Yeah, it would be some other regulatory requirement.
I mean, but the only zoning we have is for flood areas. Which, you know, you guys did the other last week or whatever. How'd that go?
Ooh, she's home.
Yeah.
She gets to write a lot of letters. I get to edit it and visit you again. I got two hippos.
Alright, so let's, let's sort of see where we are. I'd like to wrap this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I've got to be out of here in twenty minutes.
What else? How many comment, how many comments, Jeff?
Uh, well, it's all a bit, uh, but basically around the village center. This question of potentially expanding to match the village, the, the town. Proposals and also clarifying the Belmont Village Center again, according to the town's plan. Resource-based recreation, particularly concerned around Nineveh because, you know, limited access. Potentially little few job creation opportunities, little housing opportunity, given the Nineveh Foundation rules. Uh, potentially the area around Farmer Wilderness Camp could be noted as resource-based recreation. Mount Holly Heights also may be a bit unlikely for resource-based recreation. A general comment about.
Should we add Station Road too, or?
Yeah, probably. Cause Station Road also, well, I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, why?
Um. This general comment about, it's supposed to be future land use, but it actually just reflects current land use, but doesn't reflect that very well, so it's sort of not really, um, helping in the broader sense. And then the bigger issue around. Conservation and forestry, uh, and the possibility of having. Forestry in conservation areas, but mainly the, uh, comment, I think, if I can summarize it. Uh, land with protective conservation easements or restrictions on development should automatically be. Identified as conservation regardless of whether or not they're in current use or they're, they're being forested. Um, and that in that sense, the state's protected lands database. Potentially could give a much clearer idea of what should be identified as conservation. And other areas such as class two wetlands, again, whilst they're indicated within conservation areas and other general. Rural, sorry, and rural general. They also should be indicated in the, um, uh, rural agricultural and forestry. Um, and then we seem to have found a few small errors. Particularly in the southeast and around Scampsville Road as example.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty good.
Yeah.
And maybe we could ask the one last thing, we'll just ask them specifically to show us their rules for. How they generated the green.
Okay.
You know, like, try to figure out what happened there and, you know, there's some, like what actual rules they came up with for that.
Or just an explanation of the ordering, like layering, you know, and precedent.
Yeah, my sense is that be. Blood easier or two so this, uh. They're already P C if we can have a sit down with, uh, run, run, like. Write text related to the map. To actually be able to sit in the room and point things out. I don't know if that's an option.
I think we just, we could send them a list and like, if you wanna have a conversation. Have an meeting. Start with the list and then open it up.
Yeah. I guess what I'm asking is, should we actually post a meeting after that, I should review it. Rather than leaving it aside with the.
That could probably make sense for this select board to ask for some specific response.
Yeah, I think it, it'd respond to them.
Not to just like, you know, throw it at the wall.
Yeah, no, no comment back.
Yeah.
Right.
Whatever form that takes. Alright, that's pretty good. Anything else?
I just, um, you may have gone over it since I was late. Tell me to shut up. What's the advantage of making this? A.
Just allows further, it opens it up for less.
I'm assuming you discussed it, I'm just.
Well, I think the idea was, or as I recall, that there's, it's, it gives you exemptions from act two fifty review.
Or eases, eases some of the restrictions.
Eases restrictions. So like, for example, if we're gonna put in a new firehouse, fire station. Do we have to go through the full lawn? Or if we need to like rebuild a town office or whatever.
They made that.
Those things probably.
I was gonna say, they made the area probably large.
That, that would be.
The town plan makes it even larger. It suggests it goes.
Yeah, which is something that you put in the notes too, right?
Yeah.
Alright, I think we're good. Let's move on. Unless there's any last comments. You good, Jeff?
I'm good.
Alright, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you'd rather not.
No, I should.
Yeah.
Would you like to take the map home and study it for bedtime reading?
I got it electronically, I'm good.
Yeah, there you go. Alright, thank you. Alright, let's see if we can zip through the rest. You have.
Yeah, so, um, the subdivision permit amendment.
Oh, yes.
Uh, so this is the C Gordon property on one fifty five. And, um, at our last meeting, we looked at a black and white copy of, uh, the permit that. Um, Tyler Seed Gordon had got for putting his new access in. There were some elements of that which were unclear and I think we had misunderstood at least one part, which was how far this access was gonna go. So we, we, John and I had a site visit. What we agreed in general terms, but I still have to, um, write this up as a proposal and clarify with Tyler that he understands and agrees, is that. The access itself is not going to be, um, at ninety degrees to the road. It is actually, it is at an angle. And, um, it would involve, involve removing some of the vegetative buffer between the road. And the power line, which is one of the restrictions at the moment. But, uh, he, Tyler said that he could do, he would, was proposing two things. One is to, uh, make. Intensify the vegetative buffer between the current access and the proposed new access. Which currently that vegetative buffer is very thin. And also remove a section of driveway. Within his sort of, it, it, it's parallel to one fifty five. And he would remove about a twenty, twenty-five foot section of that and replace it with planting. The effect of which would be as you're driving along one fifty five, you would get a lot more vegetative buffer. As you, you wouldn't see as much of his drive, you wouldn't see the, um, house. And potentially. The only adjustment would be the, just the width of the, the, the new access, access itself. So that was one element. And the other element, we did walk around the back where there is to be the fifty foot buffer around the stream. It has been. Broached, breached potentially, but he did confirm that, um, he wouldn't make any additional, um, changes there. So what I would propose is I write an amendment to the conditions outlining what he's going to do with the access. And reiterating the fifty foot buffer around the stream.
Yeah, I think, um. One question for us is strictly speaking, this requires an amendment to our permit. To our decision, um, issued to, originally to, uh, Mr. Ballack. They're, they're seeking, you know, essentially a change. I think the probably most correct way to do it would be to hold a hearing. Theoretically, you know, we could decide on whether there are fees associated with that or not. We haven't actually had that come up before. You know, I would suggest that maybe we could make the fees minimal or something just enough to cover the posting or whatever, if we had the hearing. You know, that would give the opportunity for the neighbors to, to weigh in. Another way we could do it is probably, this is a little bit. Less maybe robust is authorizing Faith to, um, to permit this. How would we call it? Administratively without a hearing. You know, it does sort of come with a few other catches that it maybe not is. We certainly don't have anything in our regulations to allow that. You know, that's something that we should probably consider for a rewrite. You know, I suggested to Faith that, you know, per proposal, that, you know, parts of proposal are based on my suggestion. And I'm, I'm sort of thinking now that it's probably better if we do it as a hearing, even if it's a lightweight, quick one. To amend the permit. I don't know. I want you guys to tell me what you think about it.
Well, my question would be at this point, do we need the hearing? Because what he's proposing, yes, it violates the. Original. Setup, but. In other things, he's gonna increase the vegetation.
Right, which is something we would, if we, if we approved it, we would, that's what we would have to.
So consequently, he, he's, he's putting a hole here, but he's increasing here to.
Yeah.
And. The, as it is, as it stands right now, even if he blew that whole side out, his neighbors can't see him anyway. His neighbors can't see him. Pretty much up through there anyway, but that's neither here nor there.
Well, I think just procedurally, it's probably a lot better if we do the hearing, um, to amend a permit that had a hearing. The other thing that, you know, we should say is that we learned that he does have some interest in a subdivision. So that's sort of a little bit baked into his reason for having another driveway. We haven't gotten that formal application or request, but.
So he, he's considering another house?
No, he said he was not. He has two houses on the one lot. And his two houses in a business on what I believe is one lot. And the, the thing is a little bit of a tricky sort of bait and switch here is that. You may recall that Andy originally had a four lot subdivision and he said, no, I'm not gonna do that, cause it's too much of a pain. And now like a couple of years later, like we're gonna subdivide again, it's gonna be essentially a four lot subdivision, so.
I think the, the end result, if he were to do this is the business would be on, cause currently there are, he owns, he owns one lot, his father owns the other lot. One lot, his father's lot has just a house. The other larger one has both a house and the business. And I think his objective is to have. The business on one lot, one house on one lot, and one house on the other lot.
But we don't know.
But yeah, he hasn't.
And really, if you think about it, that would be a very big deal for a subdivision. If that, if that's all it is.
Right.
The other, well, a question I have is there some halfway approach? Because one of the reasons for a hearing, of course, is to alert neighbors and others. Would it be, and I know that this was apparently a very contentious issue with the neighbors.
But they want to be good neighbors.
But would it, would it be? A, a middle, midway approach to say. Alert the neighbors that we are considering this, this.
I mean, it's essentially a hearing.
Yeah, my, my view is we're required to hold a hearing before we approve that application. If someone wants to essentially change the permit. And there will be another hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of like, we're sort of dancing around the issue. We want to give notice to the neighbors. The way we do that is with the hearing.
Right, if they're arguing, they have to put it in the permitting process.
Yeah, I think if we don't do it that way, we really sort of hurt ourselves.
We could get some backlash from it.
Yeah.
A lot.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna, you know, the perception even of us cutting people out of the loop is, is not a good one. So, yeah, I think, I think probably. We consider an amendment to the permit in a similar way to like, you know, their state updates wastewater permits when you think situation changes.
If you're gonna do it, it's gonna, I'm just taking the negative approach. That it's gonna leave it open for him to argue that any restrictions. Along, let's say, one fifty five. Don't matter. You know, they were there just to appease the neighbors, to be truthful, because the bulk of that. Stretch along one fifty five belongs to the power line, to the, the, uh. Green Mountain Power, they can do whatever they damn well please in there. And there's, you know, that was. And the other part was because the one neighbor didn't want to see a potential house, so we said you gotta have high pushes. I mean, I'm oversimplifying it, but he could argue that those restrictions no longer apply.
You, you can have.
I'm, I'm being the devil's advocate here.
You, you can plant stuff along there that doesn't grow over, you know, fourteen feet.
He seemed very open to the idea of, of additional plantings and such, but I think. The framework for this, the vehicle for this is probably the hearing. That's the different one, I told you, but I thought it through, I think. You know, basic fairness to the neighbors and procedural clarity. Um, we just gotta do, we.
Regrettably, I, I have agree with you.
Alright, so are we in agreement on that? We'll ask them to put together an application for amendment.
Do we have such a thing?
It was an application.
A subdivision application?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they reference their existing permit. Cause this will have binding effects, you know, on the, the land and it, we just need to make sure it's done right. Okay, so let's quickly, um. Do you want to quickly summarize? I really have to get out of here in like less than five minutes.
Uh, Blue Spruce, we also went there. We heard from the owners that they have, um, quote, made. Gutted and improved the interior of one of the, the two existing, um, uh, buildings. I.
I heard two.
Well, they.
They were in the process of starting, gutted one.
They've gutted one which they're living in and they've started on the other. I did, uh, receive a, a phone message was left by Mr. Baker, the owner. I did receive, a phone message was left by Mr. Baker, the owner, asking me to call him back. I did call him back, but wasn't able to get through to him. I haven't taken any additional action, but I think there are a couple of things that need to be clarified. One is the status of the fire marshal's view, because apparently the fire marshal who condemned the building has been and seen the property and seen what they're doing, but I haven't yet been able to speak to him to find out whether it's still condemned. On the flood hazard area issue, we did ask him, Mr. Baker, to fill in a an application for a permit. And I presume that's what he wanted to talk to me about, but as I say, I haven't been able to speak to him to confirm that, and he has not been in the office since.
Yes, I was also present. One thing, a couple of things I'll add to that. So the owners were there, they met with us. They admitted that they had completely gutted the existing buildings. The, the main hotel building is still collapsed and there's no actual building to renovate, but the other two buildings were completely gutted. It was described, the main house that they're living in now, was described as being full of black mold and having waste in the, within it. The bottom full of, I believe was human waste at one time. And the fire marshal had visited with them and confirmed with them that the, all buildings had been condemned, but I guess did not take action against them. But they were made aware by the fire marshal that the building is condemned that they're living in. We informed them that they were within a flood hazard area and that any redevelopment of that property, those buildings needed a permit. There is very clearly, I can't remember what the term is in the ordinance, but it says a substantial reconstruction. There's no doubt that this meets that, is above that threshold. They're like, I can't remember, it was like a percentage of the value of the property. They have, they're redoing, rebuilding the entire building.
Substantial improvement.
This is 100% no doubt a substantial improvement to those buildings and therefore requires a permit. So we told them that. They seem to get quite testy with us. And I think that's one of the reasons Faith wanted me to be present, I'm glad I was. Yeah, I told them that their, their attitude wasn't appreciated. But they, they sort of getting a little bit contentious with us. So there may be some dispute about this. So we need to make sure that we write laws, people follow them, you know, we didn't go through all that for nothing, so. We'll see where it goes.
Well, now, the building they're living in, does that have a foundation under it? Or is it a slab?
I don't know that. They invited us to go in and I declined, considering they said it was full of black mold and it's condemned. I want to know part of that. I think we're going to have to leave it there today. But one thing I did want to mention is my schedule has changed fairly significantly for Wednesdays. I'm wondering, we don't necessarily need to decide tonight, but, well, maybe we do. Our next meeting, I would like, thereafter, I'd like them to be on the third Tuesdays. If that, you have something that conflicts every time?
From 4:30 on.
Okay.
I mean, if it's later.
Like it's six or seven, like we do. Okay. And we have the hearing on the 17th now, on the Tuesday. I'd like to do our regular meeting after that. Does anybody know of any conflicts? And, you know, we can accommodate other people's conflicts too, but I will for sure have a childcare problem on Wednesday evenings, so.
We can elect her to be on the board.
Someday, someday.
She can be on the junior board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She'd be happy to. So does anybody have a problem with our next regular meeting being after the hearing on June 17th? Either, I mean, we could do 6:30 or 7, whichever. Might be something to be said for her earlier.
At this point, I don't see a problem.
Shall we make it 6:30 as the regular time?
That's, we could do that. Get out of here a little earlier.
That gives me a pat.
The downside is the summer.
Oh, that makes a difference.
Okay.
Originally, we should.
All right, I, yeah, I'm not going to make it, but, okay. We're agreed?
Goes untied.
All right, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.